Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We have a full council tonight. I would ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Buse?
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to be gathered together this evening for this council meeting. We are indeed grateful for this beautiful community that we live in and grateful for the moisture that Thou sent to our lands and ask that Thou might send more to reinvigorate our forests and keep us safe from fires. We are grateful for the dedicated employees we have here at the town and especially grateful for our first responders and pray that Thou would watch over and protect them and their families. We ask that Thou would bless us this evening with wisdom and a spirit of cooperation as we look at how at the business before us and look at how we might serve the community here and what's best for this community and the citizens here. And we ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Buse. Is that better? Okay, thank you. Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard in call to the public and individuals are limited to three minutes. We have a request tonight from Rob Ingles.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time of public participation, I just thought I would share with you, I'm personally disappointed to see a new connectivity made to Highway 260. And in trying to trace some information down, I am presently waiting for response from ADOT after having quite a bit of conversation sharing what has gone on since December of 2019 regarding concerns expressed by some of the citizenry in the community regarding where the large acreage between Camp Grace and the go-kart fun park would occur. And those of us that have property in the Sholo Lake Road area have already experienced traffic concerns. Other people in the community have expressed over several referendums and voting and when ADOT implied by saying that the permit that was given out for access based on traffic studies for an RV park there, that the permit was given out the latter part of this last year. I specifically said, as a citizen involved in a referendum, it would be kind of nice to know the date and who the applicant was on that. And I'm waiting now to see if we would need to make a public records request to ADOT just to find that timing out because this has been an ongoing concern for years regarding how that property will get developed and fit into the community as best as it can. And feeling that the voters had spoke and having several phone calls Tuesday night this week and having talked with Jeremiah Lloyd, the Community Development Director, last Thursday night regarding these same concerns, I'm hoping that as a community we can have maybe some transparency and as we move ahead with how the properties that have yet to be developed will affect us as a community, maybe some more interaction instead of waiting till things happen and then trying to react to it. Thank you for the time to address you. Like I say, there has been a lot of history leading up to this new tie-in to Highway 260 in the town of Pine Top Lakeside. And it seems there maybe would have been more involvement with the development department. Town manager probably drives by this site daily and is aware of what's been going on. I don't mean to name people individually, but I think the responsibility to listen to the citizens, share information, and act on our behalf, the citizens could be more transparent than it is and more, I'll say, willing to listen and get the citizens' vote. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. Having no other requests, we'll move on to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. As you can see, we have three items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there any conversation or questions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. If all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. We'll move on then to item D, which is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been introduced, announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 tonight is Consider Resolution Number 22-1610, Adopting a Seventh Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Aspen Meadow at Pine Top LLC, AZG Meadows LLC, AZG Lot 9 LLC, Southern Oasis Inc., and Flag Hollow Investment Group LLC. Jeremiah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item before you is not a new item. It was approved identically five years ago in 2017. The developer has come to the town asking for extension on this for another five years and with no changes to their current development agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Buse?
This is the property that's for sale right now, right? Okay.
Any other questions? We do have the applicant here tonight. Introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Daniel Shreve. We've been involved with this project for, I think we're looking at about 14 years right now. The history on this a little bit is back in 2007, 2008. We started the infrastructure and started moving forward, and then with the economy that kind of went down, we put it into mothballs, if you will. Since that time, it's been our hope to, at the right time, to begin that development again. We feel this is the time. We actually did have it on the market for sale. Currently, it is under contract. If the new buyers go forward, great, because I think they have the same vision and plan we did. If they do not, our game plan at this point is go ahead and finish the infrastructure and get it to that point and see where we go if we start going vertical or what we do at that point, but at least get the infrastructure in. So that's the game plan at this moment. We had planned that kind of a couple of years ago, but when COVID hit, it kind of put a little kink in our works, if you will, and so we kind of put it on the back burner and suddenly we're up again already for another extension. So please know that we're invested in it. We have close to $2.5 million of infrastructure in there that, of course, the time is money and it's been enough time, so we're hoping that soon that that development moves forward.
Thank you. Does anybody from the council have any other questions? We do have one citizen who wishes to speak on this agenda item, Rob Ingles.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. I happen to be an adjoining property owner to this project and thanks to neighborhood meetings, having a general plan that was adhered to and a planned development that included buffering around the perimeter for those of us that prefer low-density lifestyles and the ability to create commercial opportunity and higher density and clustering in areas, keeping open spaces that would provide for drainage. I was a strong, I am a supporter of the whole project moving ahead and being renewed, and I'm wishing them the best. It'll be almost a relief to have a row of single-family residential lots up against us as compared with what could possibly happen if it were under a different kind of zoning. And looking back on our town codes and the general plan for the guidance as this project came forward, there was a lot of effort put out by the developers at that time to deal with neighborhood meetings, talk about options, bring the traffic out on the Highway 260 because of the density and knowing that this project bordering Penrod Lane there already is pretty confining due to other businesses and the narrowness of the road. So as a resident in that area, to see a project come forth and feel it's stalled out, but to renew it now as a council and give it an opportunity, a green light to move ahead, that would be an exciting thing, I think, for the whole community to have what they're proposing here come to be a part of our community. And again, I appreciate my 42 years of residing in this community, being on the Planning Commission in the past, to see the foresightedness in the planning that went into a project like this. Hopefully, the marketing will occur and we'll have a new development that will make people happy in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion? Counselor Krigbaum?
I move to approve Resolution Number 22-1610, Adopting a Seventh Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Aspen Meadow at Pine Top LLC, AZG Meadows LLC, AZG Lot 9 LLC, Southern Oasis Inc., and Flag Hollow Investment Group LLC and its successors and assigns.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for being here tonight, Dan and Clint. We hope that we see this go forward, anyway. Item D2 is the introduction of Commander Daniel Wilke, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'd like to take this time to introduce our new commander to the Pine Top Lakeside Police Department, Dan Wilke. He comes to us with a whole bunch of experience. He's had 12 years' experience in the military and the Marines. He worked for the police department for 20 years and retired from them and then went to work for the Peoria Police Department as lieutenant and has been there five years before coming to us. And we wholeheartedly welcome him and him and his wife. His wife's here tonight as well. And any questions?
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Dan? Welcome. If you'd introduce your wife, we'd love to meet her.
Mayor, Council, I just want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity. I'm very happy to be here. My wife and I have had a residence here for the last five years, but now we've gone full time, which is what we've always wanted to do. So I've already been working with the chief and our staff and other city departments, and I really like being here and I look forward to the opportunity of contributing to this community.
Thank you for being here and thank you for letting him work for us, anyway. All right. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Okay. Item D3 on the agenda is Consider Authorizing the Call of Election and Resolution Number 22-1609 for the town's 2022 primary election, August 2 of 2022, and the general election, if needed, November 8 of 2022. Kristi.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The Town of Pine Top Lakeside will hold a primary election on Tuesday, August 2, 2022, in conjunction with the county election for the purpose of electing a mayor for a year term, three council members for a four-year term, and one council member for a two-year term. A general election will be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, to fill any seats that remain unfilled after the primary election. Navajo County registration and voting lists will be used for the municipal election. In order to be qualified to vote, you must be registered by Monday, July 4, 2022. Candidates seeking municipal office may obtain candidate packets, which contain nomination papers and other election materials that must be filed by candidates for public office at the Pine Top Lakeside Town Clerk's Office at Town Hall. Candidates must file nomination papers and other nomination forms by 5:00 PM on April 4, 2022, at the Pine Top Lakeside Town Clerk's Office at Town Hall for their names to appear on the primary election ballot. The earliest date for filing nomination papers is March 7, 2022. Candidates seeking nomination for mayor and council member will be required to obtain a minimum of 42 signatures.
Thank you, Kristi. Any questions from the council? Comments? Motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve authorizing Resolution Number 22-1609 for the Call of Elections for the town's 2022 primary election, August 2, 2022, and the general election, if needed, November 8, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Kristi. Moving on to item D4, reports from council committee liaisons and the town manager. Let's start tonight with Counselor Snitzer.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got three to report on. Start with tracks. The, we're not gearing up for trail work just yet, but we did get approval of two important grants. One grant will help provide for a shortcut trail on Blue Ridge. If you know that, it's a very popular trail just north of town, but it's a very large loop, and this trail will cut it into half so you can have either two of small loops or the big loops. It'll be more flexible. And the grant, that's an extremely difficult piece of ground to build a trail over. There's about three miles of trail that need to be built, and the grant will pay for some equipment to do the heavy workforce, and then the trail crews will do the finishing up. And then the second grant is something we've been working on for years and we're still working on, we're not there yet, but to get bike gates. And these are gates. If you know out in the forest, there's several places where you go through a fence and there's a gate for a person. Well, this would be an additional gate to go just right next to that that allows a bicycle. A person can use it, but it's designed for a bicycle. You can just ride, it's like a ramp, you ride up and over, but it's also like a cattle guard. The cattle will not go through that opening. And so it's something that makes our whole forest much more bike-friendly. We've identified, I'm not sure, 43, I think, is the number of locations that we want to install these gates out in the forest. So when we get that done, we will become, the mountain bikers are a very good demographic to attract, as tourists, they're young people with money. They enjoy a good time, they have very nice equipment, they take care of it, and they would be just such an addition to our community as tourists, and a few of them may end up deciding that they would like to, you know, spend some more time here. So that's really exciting. The second thing, the nature center, we're starting our new year, we're developing, getting back to normal list of programs. We've already had two events in the evening there, a couple of speakers, really great events. We're also doing more emphasis this year on outdoor events, nature walks and outdoor things, just because of COVID. We've added a couple of members, excuse me, members to our board. And then we're working with an outfit called Land on Sky to add a bird exhibit there at the nature center. And then we've also gotten a grant for $250,000 to build an amphitheater. So that work is progressing slower than we wanted to, but it's progressing. The birds will actually get here Saturday, day after tomorrow. We're going to temporarily be, there'll be three birds, a crow, Eurasian eagle owl, which looks like a horned owl, only slightly bigger, and a Harris hawk. And we've revamped our existing rehab facility to provide temporary housing until we get the pens built for them. We hope to have everything done and be showing these birds this summer, so. And we'll be asking for volunteers to help do all kinds of things, including people that are interested in working with the birds. We expect to end up with a waiting list because it's really something that's very gratifying for people to do, to work with these birds, and requires a little bit of training, but if you're willing to put forth, it's just common sense, but just things like, you know, move carefully around the birds, stay aware, observe. You know, if you see a bird with his head hanging down, he's trying to tell you that he's not feeling good, so be observant. And then we had leased out our buildings. One of the leases has expired, so we're going to be looking for someone to lease. We have a 1,200-square-foot building and a very large front yard, so we're going to be looking for somebody to lease that to help, we're looking for this lease money to help kind of carry us through this COVID thing. And then the last one I have is on the Little Colorado RC&amp;D. That's the group that's been working on Rainbow Lake and working with the irrigation company. It's a touchy arrangement. The irrigation company is, has, you know, I'll just have to say frankly, sometimes they're a little hard to deal with, and they have, to me, my personal opinion, a fundamental problem that the future is going to depend on them being able to show a beneficial use for the water. And we need to convince them that one of the possible beneficial uses of water is tourism. And they see water as just water for irrigation, and the fundamental problem with that is that the irrigation company is very small and only a very few number of people get that water and use it for their beneficial purpose, but it's not, it's going to be very difficult for them to show a large-scale benefit to this community unless they, you know, come over to the dark side and start looking at recreational uses for that water. So it's a very difficult move for them to make. I've got to say, they've come a long way. I think they've got a long way to go yet, but they've come a long way, so things are kind of circling, you know, coming along, I'll say. Hope to have more better news later on this year. So that's my reports.
Thank you, Counselor Snitzer. Counselor Watson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of wet-your-whistle kind of items, I guess. One, the, as you know, I've been working on affordable housing, and there are a number of concepts that are being developed because this is an issue not only for us but across the state and across the nation. So there are some pretty exciting concepts and things that create a sense of community but do it in a very high-density environment. I think it's something that we, as leaders in this community, need to think about and start, as we look at our general plan, look at those areas that may be conducive. When we talk about affordable housing, we're talking, in many instances, housing that's affordable for young professionals. We're talking medical, education, first responders. There's a lot of areas where current housing prices and construction costs are such that it's unaffordable. So just something to think about and start evaluating where we think in our community we could build that kind of young professional community. The second item is, as most of you are aware, across the country, and it's truly the same in our area, for the hospital, our numbers are way down. We've been able to close several of our temporary ICUs that we had to put into place, and our home health program is greatly reduced as well. I plan at the next meeting to actually give you some statistics on programs and cost savings and things that were put into place to help us get through that issue, which we're not over with yet, but it's definitely looking a lot better, and it's a good thing for all of the healthcare professionals that have had to really step up and dedicate themselves during this last couple of years. So I'll be bringing more information on that. Thank you.
Thanks for that good news, Counselor Watson. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. For those of you who are paying attention to our list of activities that we monitor and help out with the council, Municipal Property Corporation is no longer listed there because we dissolved it. It was a corporation that, where the town deposited land and property at one time, and we had slowly sold all of that, and we have no more use for it, so we dissolved that corporation. The Senior Center, let's see, we're serving lunch this 17th, I believe, St. Patrick's Day, so everybody that can attend there and help, that'll probably be a pretty big thing. We, the Senior Center did receive a legacy grant. I don't have the exact number, but it was over $100,000. So it was a very, very nice grant for the Senior Center. They're starting to upgrade their kitchens or refrigerators, their tables, their chairs, and some of the physical property right now with some of that money. So they're pretty excited about having that much in their balance sheet now. The Transit Advisory Council will be meeting next month. Not too much going on there. We did, last week, I mentioned that we were looking at the possibility of moving one of our bus stops to another location, kind of catty corner across the street. We have, because of financial considerations and the actual real need is not that great, so we're not going to do that. So we're saving that money.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Heisler? Do you have any? I know you're new to this, but have you?
I do not have anything to report yet.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. Counselor Buse?
Just a couple of things. I did contact the president of the museum last week, and they have not had any meetings for actually quite a while, but it sounds like they'll start up in the spring. The school is still in session since the legislature finally did something on that. Otherwise, they probably wouldn't have been. But school's very appreciative of, there was a threat, as many of you knew of, at the junior high, which was neutralized very quickly by law enforcement and by students stepping up and bringing it forward. So that was resolved very quickly and done very well. Let's see, the spring break is coming up, the 14th through the 21st of March. They are, feel big the issue of affordable housing also. They have actually built out two small apartments on school property and are looking at a grant where they'll probably do that, put four more apartments in, some property they own. So that will be helpful for that. Also, there's still time to get a tax credit and donate to the school. You can do that till April 15. And Beauty and the Beast will be performed at Blue Ridge. will be performed at Blue Ridge the 25th and 26th of March and the 1st and 2nd of April. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor abuse. Counselor Krigbaum?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim gave an excellent report for tracks, so that takes care of that. Natural Resources Group has not met because they have just been doing their regular work and nothing exciting happening. Four for Eye still goes along on Zoom. Forest Health Committee still hasn't met, and we are hoping, Tabor Heisler and I are on that, we hope to have a meeting soon, whenever Chief Morgan calls it. And I think Jeremiah is also involved in that. Finally, my report is Save Our Park is going to finally meet in April. We've been kind of quiet because we have done what we wanted to do. And our president, Barbara, is not well, and so we haven't been meeting, but we will be meeting in April. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I don't have too much to report tonight, but another role I play is treasurer of the Blue Ridge Scholarship Fund. We're having our annual fundraising golf tournament on April 30 at White Mountain Country Club. We're seeking businesses to sponsor a hole, golfers to come play, donations for raffles, and things such as that. So we thank our sponsor Summit Healthcare, who comes through every year for us. So that event will be at White Mountain Country Club, like I said. Keith, what do you have for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, the next week, we have our council retreat, oh, well, budget, first budget meeting. That'll be on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. We'll have lunch and snacks throughout the day, delivering the department reports. And then we'll also talk about the strategic plan update. And I think you have a copy of the draft that's been put together at this time. We have also, this month here in March, the Darren Reed Foundation Dinner fundraising. So if any of the council would be interested in attending that, let us know. Just contact Tony Alba, and we'll, we have several staff and council that are going at this time. And lastly, challenge is there for the SUSE Crew Walk, 28 miles, 30 miles. I know Counselor Krigbaum is, she beat me. I'm telling you, she beat me to the mayor's church, the first 10 miles. And I stopped, say hi to grandkids, and she took off. She was going. So she's doing it again. So we're looking forward to supporting breast cancer awareness in our community. So that's all I have.
Okay. I think one other item that I would like to just mention, we've all been notified that the Forest Service will be doing prescribed burning in within Lake Park. I believe that starts tomorrow, my dates, if the weather is conducive. So for the month of March, I believe we should be aware of that.
So they'll be closing the tract, and then they'll, the burn will start later next week.
Okay.
It kind of got pushed back a little bit.
And it does not involve the walk around the lake?
Right.
Correct.
The park, as we know it, will be open.
Yes.
Yes.
But not the backcountry trails.
Yes. So there being no further business tonight, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.